In the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk take the roll, please?
Mayor Grove.
Here.
District one, Morissette.
Here.
Two, O'Connell.
Here.
Three, Radamacher.
Here.
Four, Wyland.
Here.
Five, O'Malley.
Here.
District six, Cook will be absent tonight.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. I have a red ribbon committee, and they're all going to come forward and read the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. And they are responding accordingly. I thought it would be nice to get these young people involved rather than I reading the proclamation. I had a volunteer under some duress. Who said, "No, you can read it up there, dear." And you're on national TV, I forgot to tell you. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Deidre Coulson.
I'm Sam Otten.
I'm Amanda Houston.
Kyle Kyle.
Ground Chulo.
What a fine-looking group.
Proclamation, Red Ribbon Week. Whereas the use and abuse of tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs is a great concern to society, and whereas the Hudson School District and local chapter of Students Against Destructive Decisions, SAD, provide educational programs for students urging them to support and live a healthy drug-free lifestyle, and whereas Community Action Incorporated provides needed services for families and teens in the area and supports programs for the prevention and rehabilitation of drug and alcohol abusers, and whereas National Red Ribbon Week was officially proclaimed in 1988 by the U.S. Congress and marked by the wearing of a red ribbon to send the message, "Live Drug Free," and whereas the Hudson School District, SAD, Community Action, and the St. Croix Underage Drinking Coalition have joined in sponsoring the local Red Ribbon Campaign, an annual Red Ribbon 5K Run-Walk event to be held Saturday, October 21st. Now therefore, I, John D. Burrell, Mayor of the City of Hudson, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim October 21st to 28, 2006 as the official Red Ribbon Week in the City of Hudson, and urge all families and students to observe the campaign by supporting the Red Ribbon Week events by wearing red ribbons and by avoiding the use of tobacco, drugs, and alcohol, given under my hand and the seal of the city, the 16th day of October, 2006.
Excellent job. I want to thank you, young people, for volunteering to do that. I thought would be much more meaningful coming from you than it to have the mayor read another proclamation, as he usually does. I want to thank you for being here, and I want to thank you for representing your school and your city. Thanks again. And I believe, Jerry, you have something to present to the council?
Yes, I do. This is a request that's related to safety and bicycle riding. And I brought some maps here to show you what I'm talking about. When I moved here many years ago to Hudson, one of the things my wife and I really liked was if we could ride from our front door of our house and go out of the city and ride all the way to River Falls or even New Richmond and back. And, you know, where else can you do something like that out of your own home community? And, excuse me, too, let me tell you, my address is 223 Iverson Circle. And I've been a resident here in Hudson since 1984. So, one of the things that hap- has happened over the years is our community has grown a lot. The roads become more heavily trafficked, and there's been a lot of construction. The best route between Hudson and River Falls is going down County F to Cooley Trail Road, which used to be County FF, and then over to Glover Road and down, then following Glover Road to M, and then right into River Falls. Cooley Trail was, road was widened by the county several years ago, and big paved shoulders were added. In just the past two years, the town of Troy has been widening Glover Road and adding paved lanes on each side. And, and yet, it's as busy as Carmichael Road or County F is, where it narrows down from four lanes wide to two lanes wide. It's, it's a dangerous place for bicycles to, to go just in order to get out of town and over to Cooley Trail Road. And so what I've provided here is this map showing that if there were some paved shoulders on the northbound side, just 360 feet long, from Cooley Trail up to where the two lane on the northbound side pavement already exists, it would be a lot safer for bicycles to ride up that way. Coming down from the south, the road starts, Carmichael starts to narrow at about Riverside, and that's more like 1,640 feet or so down to Cooley Road, where it would be nice to have some paved shoulders. Bicycles could be on and out of the traffic, and it would add to their safety. There's a lot of people who ride bicycles in Hudson. We support our own bike shop, and they sell an awful lot of really expensive bikes and bikes tuned to just the average person. And, and so there, there are a lot of people who would appreciate this.
Well, Jerry, we appreciate your request. It's not on the agenda, so we can't vote on that tonight, but we will turn that over to our Safety Committee and our Public Works Committee, and maybe at that time they can identify when that meeting is and have you come for a more formal presentation. Okay with everyone? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this particular time for any item that's not on the agenda? Yes? Please come on.
Hi, my name's Tony Bauer. A longtime resident of Hudson. I live on the corner of Sixth and Walnut. And we, we purchased our house back in 1991. And at that time, when we bought, we, we learned after buying our house that we have pretty poor water there. What, what it seemed, the more I found out over the years, basically, at one time, the city decided to cut the water main right, basically, out in front of our house and dead-ended it. So, the water main delivers water downhill. We're at the very bottom of the hill, and it's the big full-size city water main and our little pipe coming off of it. And they try to flush the hydrant to remedy the stagnant water problem, but they can't flush it enough to, to really do any good. And actually, it's like when they flush it, it takes at least a week before it even settles down. And we've been dealing with this problem for, for all this time. At one point, somebody came up with the idea to move our line from below the hydrant, where there was no means to flush it, to above the hydrant. That did help, but it certainly didn't fix the problem. And then now, there's a lot more concern in our neighborhood because of the, the bad water, because of the hospital shutting down, and other things that I guess have been happening with the city water supply for our neighborhood. But it's, all of this is, just seem to make our problem that much worse. I've called regularly, trying not to be too big of a pest, but, you know, come and flush, come and flush. We, at this point, they could just keep flushing. It just doesn't do any good anymore in our toilets. Our water is just horrible to smell, and, and has been forever, and it's just worse now.
Let me ask you a question. Does your neighbor, Bakins, have that same problem?
They, they have, the problem, when, they always notice it more once they flush. And that's because it stirs it all up. There's no way to get the water at the end of the line out of the end of the line, because the hydrant is up above the end of the line, for one thing, and, and its gravity is going against us. And there again, we can't use enough water.
To keep it?
To keep it circulated. Along with suggestions from the city are, we go and purchase ourselves some water filters, try to flush it out as much as we can with our garden hoses. We can't make a dent in it, you know? It's a big, full-size water main, and our little pipe coming off. And, and I just figured, maybe if I come with, with all this other stuff that's going on and address the problem and explain our end of it, maybe there's some little momentum, and maybe something will actually get done that will fix the problem instead of trying to put a patch on it, or, you know?
I'll discuss that with Mr. Christopherson, who's the director of our water department. Also, the Chief Frye is here, I'm sure he's acquainted with that. And as I usually do with staff, I'd like to have him bring in the solution rather than the problem. And so, as soon as Denny is back, he just had an operation last week, I'll discuss it with him and also with Mr. Frye and see if we can come up with some approach.
I certainly would appreciate it. We've been, you know, we, we try not to complain, but at the same time, it's been, since, you know, we bought the house in 1991, so it's been a long time, and nothing's ever really been done to try to fix the problem. And, so I appreciate it.
We'll have somebody look at it, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up to us. Anyone else? Yes? John?
I'm John Anderson with GSET Builders. We'd come in once before and presented a project down by the river with the Cowal Foods. The project, at that time, required some city land that we'd either purchased or traded, and it didn't seem to go over very well. So, the next piece, we made an adjustment to the, we made an adjustment to the.
Well, again, John, we can't make a decision on it because it's not on the agenda. But I asked John in a telephone conversation to basically give us two approaches. That is, so we can make a selection between something and something. And the difference is, with the land that the city owns, and what John is presenting tonight, is a project without the city property. Is that correct?
That's correct. And actually, both building types are without the city.
Okay.
Land. They, they, they shrunk, they, they made some changes to the building. The one, they straightened it out. That's an option. The other one still has a soft-toothed design to kind of give some, to break up the facade a little bit there. But they, neither one of them, at this time, require any, any of the city, the city property.
Okay, so we can take these back to the Planning Commission eventually through the council. At least, we've got a position with or without the property in, which is a concern to a lot of.
Exactly.
Residents, okay? Does the council have any questions of, of John?
Yes, I do. With this result in a change in the altitude or the height of the building?
No.
At this point, we, we're not even, I guess, really addressing that. I think that's somewhere down the road. We're just making it fit without the, the use of the city property. So you could, it's available, do whatever. If it's parking, sidewalk, if it's green space, it's, it's not necessary for our.
I think this may help us, Scott, in the final decision going through the Planning Commission, that at least they can make a decision between going without the exchange of the property, as he's pointing out here, or they at least can look at it with the exchange of the property. The main thing is that the project will continue to go rather than the discussion of, should we sell, shouldn't we sell, should we give them the land, shouldn't we give them the land? So now, we've got an approach that I think the Planning Commission can follow, and I think Denny's in concert with what I've said.
I exceeded by it, I haven't seen him.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But this will go back to the Planning Commission.
Sounds like a good approach.
Well, it removes a possible stumbling block.
Yeah, yeah. In the ultimate, the project will probably go ahead, depending on what the Planning Commission says. Appreciate what you've done, John, and we'll put it back in the, in the channels. If council hasn't got any specific questions?
Just, what, does this change any of the occupancy that you're talking about?
They didn't change it. There, there might be a small portion on this, on this leg right here.
Yeah.
The original portion went up to kind of consume that building that was there, but nobody's, we, we haven't contacted anybody about purchasing that building. So they, they shrunk that portion out. That would be the only piece that I know of that was an occupancy issue.
I think that building is currently owned by Freedom Oil.
And they haven't contacted, yeah, there's no contact either way.
Any other questions? If not, I thank you, sir.
So, are we on for the next meeting?
You'll have to talk to Denny.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for bringing that forth, John. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Anyone? Let's go to the consent agenda, and Madam Clerk will vocalize consent agenda for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of October 2nd, 2006.
To approve claims for payment in the amount of $433,912.84. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office for inspection. To approve the issuance of regular operators licenses for the period October 17th, 2006 through June 30th, 2008, to Jonathan Oberg, Richfield, Minnesota, and Nicholas Mueller, Hudson, Wisconsin. To approve the installation of two children-at-play signs at each entrance to Burl Oak Curve off Carmichael Road. To approve blocking off Second Street between Walnut and Locust Streets from 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM on Friday, November 24th, 2006, for the Light Up Night Parade. To approve additional yellow striping or taping at the corner of Locust Street and Fourth Street, six feet back from the intersection on both streets. To place on file the quarterly reports of the Parks Director, Fire Chief, and Assessor Building Inspector, and the Public Utility Commission minutes of October 10th, 2006, and the Hudson Area Advisory Joint Fire Board minutes of September 25th, 2006. That is all.
Please, your pleasure on the consent. Move for approval. Second? Mr. Morissette, seconds? Roll call vote, please.
Morissette?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Radamacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
The motion is carried. Let's go to Plan Commission. The final development plans for a 24, 25,400-square-foot bank facility in the southwest quadrant, Stage Line Road and Center Drive, Citizen State Bank.
Plan Commission recommends approval of the final development plans for the Citizen State Bank facility at Stage Line and Road and Center Drive. An amount to be determined, the amount of a security deposit or letter of credit be determined by the city engineer for a letter of credit to ensure restoration of curb and gutter, street and boulevard restoration if applicable. Mr. Pat Giadana is here tonight, representing Citizen State Bank. Pat is the project engineer. Do you want a brief presentation by Pat, or?
Why don't we just show the, the artwork for the television audience? And I think the council is updated pretty much on the project. It's a wonderful-looking.
Yes, please.
Wonderful-looking building. I think it'll be a real asset to the neighborhood. Certainly compatible with the developments to the south. And maybe you can just explain the traffic pattern into the drive-in?
Certainly. Again, my name's Pat Jird, and I'm the architect on the project for Citizen State Bank. The corner of Center Drive and Stage Line, right across from the hospital, is our location. The primary flow on the site is access for walk-in clientele would be this front parking lot on the north side of the facility. The drive-thru, you come down Center Drive, in off of the new road, I don't know if anyone's seen this, but this road has now been installed off of Center Drive, up along this loop, and then back out onto Center Drive. So we have a large amount of queuing space for, say, Friday afternoon, when the, when the most traffic is generated typically at the drive-thru. And then the employee parking sits on the south side of the parcel.
And part of that building will also be rented?
That's correct. The, the Citizen State Bank will take the, the entire main level and about half of the upper level, so there's about 4,500 square feet of leasable space on the upper floor initially, which gives them growth in the next five to 10 years.
Any questions, council? Recommendation is to approve. Do you have a question?
I do. Your C, page C2 indicates that your parking spaces do not quite meet city code. It won't be a hindrance to you because you do have the 60 feet needed for two-tier parking, but I'm going to ask that you stripe out 20 feet, not just 18.
So you want us to do the 20, 20, 20 spacing?
Because that is the city code.
Yes, we can do that.
I talked to Pat about that this afternoon. They're agreeable to it.
Good.
Out of curiosity, are there any plans for the existing Citizen State Bank building that you know of?
Not that I know of. I know it's certainly going to be sold, and they've, they've got, been in contact with, with a real estate company, but I've not heard of who potential buyers may be.
I'll move for final, for approval of the final development plans, with proviso that Denny mentioned, as to work out the letter of credit. Bantera may figure into that because that's still being built, but I will move for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Want to include your striping request?
That's already been approved.
Yeah, he's already okayed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go to number two, discontinuance of part of Myrtle Street right away, west of First Street, between 925 First Street and 1001 First Street. Introduce Resolution 1406 and schedule a public hearing for 11:20 06 at 6:55 PM.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
A point, in our advertisement, we require to have a class three notice. We got to have a 40-day waiting period from tonight to have the public hearing. So we need to move the public hearing back to December 4th at 6:55 versus the November.
Oh, okay.
We meet the class three insertion, but we can't meet the waiting period, so we need to move it back. So the public hearing and public hearing announcement will be changed to December 4th at 6:55 PM.
December 4th, 6:55. I hope everybody has taken a drive pass there because that's quite a nice extension of Myrtle, and certainly a nice view of the river. We are going to retain quite a bit for a pathway for future park connections to the walkway, but it's, it's a very nice piece of property, and we'll get it back on the tax roll. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion's carried. Let's go down to Finance Committee. And we want to review the bids received for Grandview Park irrigation. Are you going to do that again, Jim?
We received bids for the Grandview Park irrigation system on October 12th. We had one bid from Rainmaster Lawn Systems, and we're, we've fitted with options. The base bid, or alternate one, was just a single field with all the controls, connections, whatever. And then alternate two was a unit price for the remaining individual fields. The base, base bid was $24,670, and that's what we're recommending proceeding with. We have funding for $22,900, and the balance, we're recommending the 1,800 coming from donations.
And recommendation finance is to go ahead with what just Jim vocalized for us.
So, we accept the Finance Committee recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion's carried. Let's go through the same thing for Lakefront Park irrigation system project. And Jimmy White, why, want to mention on the, at the start of it, how that irrigation system is going to pump from the river?
We received bids October 12th for the Lakefront Park irrigation system. That, the intention there is to irrigate the ban shell area, basically from the bathhouse parking lot south to Walnut Street. The intention there is to pump out of the river, saves us some money, not using city water. Secondarily, there's a certain amount of nutrients in the river water that hopefully will minimize how much fertilization we need to do. Rainmaster was the lone bidder, again, on this project, bid in the amount of $32,270. The recommendation is to take it from the park donations fund.
And recommendation from finance is to accept that bid with the notation you just made on the financing. Move to approve.
Second.
Just, I have one question. Are they, are they planning on finishing this before the end of this year?
The intention is, yes, to get it in, to get going. They were optimistic that they could, we could get approvals tonight, so they can get going.
Both feel, the Grandview?
Yep.
Okay, that's great. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion's carried. Next one was, review the bids received for River Walk. We're going to wait until we found, find out exactly the monies coming in for that project, so it's in a holdover category right now. Let's go to seven, and that is to consider increasing the annexation application fees, amend the municipal code, Chapter 9, dash 7, ordinance number 15, dash 06.
Move to suspend the rules.
For a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? Oh, go ahead.
Why do we need to suspend the rules?
Well, I'll, I'll explain my motion. Normally, I'm not in favor of suspending the rules when there's something we need to give a full airing to. This seems to be just a simple housekeeping item, that we need to cover the costs of staff processing the paperwork, and we need to raise it, the fee, by $1,000, from $4,000 to $5,000, in order to do that.
And this knowledge was brought forth on our last annexation, where basically, we spent a little more money than what we had collected.
We lost money.
Yeah, so this way, we anticipate an annexation coming up in the near future, and with that in mind, we thought we would bring it up to date, and as Scott said, it's kind of a housekeeping approach.
So I'll, I'll move for approval of ordinance 15, dash 6. Have we not held the vote on the?
Yeah, we have.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pose, motion's carried.
Now I think I'll move.
Yes.
Catherine, am I doing something wrong?
I think we needed a roll call on the motion to suspend. It was unanimous, so.
Okay. We're okay? All right, make your next one.
I forgot what it is. No, I, I'll amend.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call.
O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Radamacher?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
I'll keep you happy, anyway. Motion's carried.
Hey, you forgot something.
Morissette?
Yes. Jeez. We'll put your name in lights over there, she knows who you are. Let's go to Public Works Committee, discuss the possibility of a shared use of salt storage facility with the Village of North Hudson.
Jim has just asked that I cover this one for him, so he doesn't have to keep bobbing up and down. This is the result of a request from the Village of North Hudson, who wishes to have us give them the facility to store their road salt. They're moving from sand and salt mixture to pure salt, and the handling's a little different. They do not have a facility for pure salt. We went over the numbers with them, and we recommended to them that while we want to make sure we don't lose any money by letting them use our facilities, we don't expect to make any money from them either. We want it to be totally fair. I understand it would be fun to make some money, but we're not going to do that. Essentially, they need to use our manpower, our equipment, and our storage facility, part of it. They estimate 200 tons of salt for wintertime use. By contrast, the City of Hudson orders 1,200 tons of salt. So we calculated. use. By contrast, the city of Hudson orders 1,200 tons of salt. So we calculated the, uh, amount of salt that goes into one truckload, uh, the manpower needed, the equipment used, the amortization on the equipment, the amortization on the salt storage shed, which is made of concrete, not metal, so it doesn't rust. And that comes out to, based on 200 tons, it comes out to $1,250 per year. And we would bill them as they use it, and they would, we would also charge, uh, $12.50 for billing them because we, that's another thing that's using up our time and resources. So it's approximately a 12, $1,300 deal, something like that. We're going to gauge it. We're going to watch it the first year to see if we're a little over, a little under, whatever, so that it's fair to both parties. That's the fullest explanation I can think of about road salt.
Excellent. Do we keep the residue salt that they don't use?
It washes away.
Well, actually, we are doing quite a favor to the North Hudson because if they were going to build a salt shed, they would have to go to referendum.
And they're already doing that.
Well, that's for another, another approach.
What happens if they, uh, we have a harsh winter and they use 300 tons of salt?
Well, see, they're buying their own salt.
I know, but we still have to supply them.
But it was, it's not, it's not, e- exactly. And we would charge. Every time they need us to move something, because it comes to the property, we then have to move it inside the storage shed. We then, when the time occurs, move it back out for their trucks. And what we've recommended to them is that we keep their trucks full after each use so that if a sudden blizzard hits, they're ready to go.
Right.
We're not loading salt at that time.
Right. Our price, our pricing to them is per ton. What Scott had done is extrapolated the per ton price by their 200 tons.
Right.
We're at, uh, 625 a ton. So in the event they use 150 ton, it's 150 times 625. What we did was we went, uh, weighed an empty dump truck, loaded one bucket full of salt into the dump truck, went and re-weighed it. It is roughly two and a half tons. I think we were within, I don't know, 20, 30 pounds of two and a half tons. So the agreement is fine. We're going to call a bucket two and a half tons. And we just count buckets that we load. We'll just, uh, keep a pad and keep track of it that way. And that's, we're, we figured the simpler we kept it, the less likely we were to screw up keeping track of it.
Sounds good.
So I'll move that we approve the contract.
Second.
Any further discussion necessary? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes, motion's carried. Unfinished business update on project. Angela.
Uh, just two projects I wanted to highlight. Uh, number four, the bathhouse reciting project. That is, actually will be advertised in this Thursday's paper. Bids will be received on November, or be opened on November 2nd. Go to the park board on November 7th and potentially come to council on November 8th. And the very last project, number 24, the Banterah North. That project, as you, they said with the Citizen State Bank, that's where the Citizen State Bank is. They've already paved one of the roadways there. They're supposed to pave the final course today, but obviously weather did not cooperate. So they are getting very close to completing the final public roadway within that development, so.
Is that the extension of Pearson Drive or what?
That's the extension of Pearson Drive where the cul-de-sac was near Starbucks. They've removed that cul-de-sac and it now heads east towards the hospital to make a, a full loop, so.
It's amazing how fast they got that though.
Oh, I know.
Anything else? Any questions of Angela on any project? Hearing none, thank you.
Oh, sorry. Uh, sorry about that. The Vine Street corridor, how we, let's see, are you looking at the first, uh, meeting in November as far as presentation on that or second meeting?
Yeah, the first, first or second, I don't, um, I believe it's the second meeting of, of November that they would like to bring that in. I know they've done the counts, done some of the analysis. I've gotten, uh, some of the crash data. Actually, I have to get some more formal crash data from the police department, so I'll be bugging them tomorrow. Um, but we're pulling out, all the pieces are coming together, so.
Okay.
So we're planned on.
For public safety? I'd love to see it ahead if we can.
That's, when is?
That's early November. That's the first week in November.
I will see what I can bring forth at, at that time.
Has anybody got any general information on how that's working today after being in use for approximately, uh?
People seem to like.
Two months?
I'm getting, we're getting feedback that, well, especially in the morning hours with the traffic, there are people that aren't able to take lefts off of, and this is just that time in the morning, and they're sometimes not able to take a left off of Carmichael on Divine because it is backed up.
It seems like between the 7:15, 7:30 times in the morning when the high school traffic gets backed up.
People down.
Yes.
Yes, it does.
All the way on Vine Street.
The only other feedback.
They don't like it, but it's slowing down.
Right. I'm just going to say the feedback is, you know, occasionally you hear, well, I, I've been through that intersection, blah, 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 a number of times, and there's never been anybody crossing and that, but that's the feedback you're going to hear anytime you put up a stop sign, so.
But she's going to give us an extra.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
That's what we need to hear.
In detail. I was just wondering what people were, were voicing to any of the alter persons.
All positive comments my way from, uh?
Yeah, I did too.
Residents, sir.
James? You have a positive comment?
Yeah, we wound up moving the stop signs there basically to, uh, used to what it would have been the center of the turn lane. Because all we kept finding was people were still continuing to utilize it as a turn lane.
Oh.
And by effectively centering that stop sign in the center of the old turn lane, that has pretty effectively stopped that.
It has.
Hey, thank you for the, uh, update. Um, let's see, what have we got left here? Um, we had the proclamation on red ribbon week. I hope I didn't embarrass those kids too much, but I thought it was meaningful coming from them. Um, before we go into closed session, I think which is the only item left, communications items for future agendas. Uh, any alter person? I just had one thank you. I'd like to thank the Nova John Gaffer and Pat O'Keefe for doing a nice job at their facility over there. It's really starting to clean that up over in the corner at the old Casanova Building. So it looks very nice.
Yes, um, as you'll see, letters you receive from the DNR that the $100,000 grant, um, is done. It's basically the money's been approved in here. So I'd like to make sure on our next meeting agenda, we have the, uh, approval of the bids for the, um, Riverwalk Tollgate Shelter.
If all the other bids are in.
Bid, well, the bids are here and the money is available. We'll talk about that later.
Money is not available.
It is.
Very dumb argument.
No, well, it is. I got it covered. Don't worry about it.
He brought his checkbook. Could you please write a check for that? Any bank USA.
I've, I've got it taken care of.
Well, I will review it before it goes on the agenda.
Well, it should be on the agenda with the other bids that we're looking at, so.
As long as it's a full package, it will be on the agenda. If it isn't, it won't be. And the park signs look very nice.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, that was a real nice addition. Park board. City attorney?
Nope.
City administrator?
Just a couple of updates on the budget. Um, Betty and I have gone through it a couple times just to verify that the numbers are incorrectly, that the personnel costs are in. We're now going line by line. There's some of the accounts where they have, in our opinion, under budgeted based on past, um, amounts and what they've spent to date this year. So we're going to put them up to where they should be rather than under budget them and then be over at the end of the year. So that's where we are in the process now. Um, we've preliminarily moved all outlay items to bonding, preliminarily, um, which would include, there's certain items we used to pay for out of the tax roll, such as the squad cars, um, you know, furnace repair, those type of things. As a starting point, we've moved them out to see where we're at. You know, we'll have to make that decision later, what's going to be paid for out of taxes, what we're going to bond for. Um, but just so we have a clean idea of what's for operations, um, you know, we've, we've been working on it. We've been keeping Jack updated, and we did present him with the wish list, I guess is the best way to call it, for the capital outlay. So Jack does have a copy of that.
The best we can tell, we're about, uh, somewhere between 110 and 120,000 dollars that we have to look for.
It'll be much more than that because we've already found in one account $35,000 that was under budgeted. So it isn't going to be.
Well, I didn't get that.
Well, no, it was just at the end of the day, so. So anyway, but we will keep you posted on that. Um, elections, in order for individuals' names to appear on the voter list, they have to register by October 25th. They certainly can register after that, but their name will not appear on the voting list, and it's just a little more of a hassle, but more work to do at the time. They can also register at the polls. Um, election is number seven, which is a Tuesday. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Wards or districts one, four, and five vote here at City Hall. Two, three, and six vote out at the county government center in the back part, back by the jail. And computer upgrades, you had asked for an update, and Mike presented, it's on the table for you this evening, Mike, to give you an idea where he's at on the upgrades, so.
Can Mike hear?
Nope.
Anyone else? Uh, we're going into closed session pursuant to, uh, chapter 19851C, Wisconsin stats, to consider employment and compensation issues for personnel as follows. 2007 budget requests including an increase in hours for fire department secretary, increase in call rate for firefighters, creation of a police, uh, department patrol lieutenant, and additional patrol sergeant positions, and possible increase in hours for IT systems administrator position, and two, a 2007 wage adjustments for non-represented, uh, personnel.
Move to go into closed session.
Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Morsett?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Rodamacher?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Give us a few seconds and we'll go into closed session. Thanks for not forgetting me.